Welcome everybody to Windsor Council Meeting tonight. It's a special night, of course, not only is it Christmas time, but also we'll be bringing down our annual budget for 2023. So stay tuned for some fun tonight. First of all, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and then I'll move into the adoption of the minutes from last meeting, which was meeting number 569, any errors or omissions. Hearing none, I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Cody, seconded by Councillor Noel, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, any business arising out of the minutes? No business arising, we'll move into the dispersment report. Councillor Dwyer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the dispersment report dated December 8th, 2022, in the amount of $948,373.03.
It's been moved by Councillor Dwyer, seconded by Councillor Little. Any discussion on the dispersment report? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, committee reports. First up is Community Services. Deputy Mayor Brown, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Community Services Committee met 6:00 PM Tuesday, December 6th. Those in attendance, where myself is chair, Councillor Holly Dwyer, Councillor Andrew Little, Councillor Amy Cody, Councillor Bob Hiscock, Councillor Dave Noel. Staff in attendance, Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Robin Haniford, our Communications Officer, and Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services. First order of business was the 2023 Provincial Special Olympic Winter Games. The committee discussed the 2020 Provincial Winter Games happening in Grand Falls, Windsor, in March 2023. The director and the deputy mayor informed the committee that they met with the organizer and have worked out an arrangement on staffing, equipment, and facility usage for the games. With some 350 athletes, coaches, and parents, it will be one of the biggest events held here in 2023. The committee recommended to continue to help the group prepare for the upcoming games. Arena Board update. The committee discussed the progress of the minor hockey, figure skating, and the blades on their selling of the signs. The director informed the committee that minor hockey have sold almost all of their spaces at Joe Byrne Memorial Stadium. The blades have sold some of their spaces, and figure skating is just starting their selling for Windsor Stadium. The director asked for an update by the end of December so that those sponsors not involved can be removed in the new year. The committee recommends that the director keep in contact with the groups and work on ensuring the spaces are being sold. Excite Building User Group update. The committee had some discussion on the progress at the Excite Building for our user groups. The director informed the committee that everything is on schedule and that all groups should be ready to go in their spaces early in the new year. 2023 Program Update. The director informed the committee that registration for 2023 events will start January for most programs, and will be up and running that same month or early February. Rotary Correspondence. The committee had some discussion on the rotary correspondence for us to consider the purchasing of a new set of swings for the park. The committee recommends that the director set up a meeting with the Rotary Club to discuss possible partnership and the purchase of the swings, and report back to the committee. Community Healthcare Coalition Update. The committee discussed the Community Healthcare Coalition Report that was presented last week. The director informed the committee that he met with the Chief Administrative Officer and Economic Development Staff to discuss the report. The committee recommends that the department start developing a timeline to review the goals and highlight the importance of each and what is achievable with current staff. The department will report back to the committee early in the new year. The committee also had some discussion on a recent meeting with Minister Osborne. It was recommended that a town hall meeting be scheduled for the new year so citizens can be aware of the information and propose changes that could be considered. Impact Summer Ice Request. The committee had some discussion on the correspondence for impact hockey. The committee recommends that we proceed in discussion with the group to allow for a four-week extension to the winter season from April 17th to May 14th, 2023. Curling Club Correspondence. The committee had some discussion on the letter from the Curling Club. The committee recommended the councillors should attend the called meeting later tonight if available to get some idea on what their situation is with the plant, the building, and the program. New Business. The committee had some discussion on the Churchill Park light-up. The committee was very pleased with the amount of work that went into it, and thanked all staff who were involved in the project. It was a job well done. The committee discussed billing on the successes for next year to make it even better. The meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM, and I'll move the recommendations report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Brown, seconded by Councillor Hiscock. Any discussion on the Community Services minutes? Councillor Hiscock?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. With regards to the Churchill Park light-up, great job. Absolutely fabulous. There's a lot of people commenting on it and spending time during the evenings, you know, just going for a walk or driving by and looking at it. To Todd Mercer, the director, and all his staff, just an absolutely fabulous job. And for those probably who haven't driven by yet to see it, take time and do it. Just have a look by, it was just a fabulous job.
Yeah, for sure. And, you know, go down in the evening, maybe walk around the track there, because even after Christmas, I believe, the track will continue to be lit so that people can go down there all winter. And I've had comments, and I've said this before, from people in the community who do go there to help their mood and their mental health and that sort of thing. So it's, it's great to see and a great job, for sure. Councillor Dwyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Just with respect to the Community Healthcare Coalition update, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, we are going to have a town hall meeting early in the new year. I think it's important that citizens are aware of what we are doing with respect to the coalition, but also, you know, some things that have an impact directly on our citizens. And we're going to need for our citizens to have the knowledge so that they can get behind what we're doing in the new year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, we could go on, I guess, a long time about that whole Health Court piece and, you know, our dealings with that so far. But what I would say must been said around the table lately is, you know, a lot of people around, it's surprising how many people really don't know what the Health Court is, or, you know, what exactly it's all about, or how it may impact us, or every Newfoundland or Labradorian. And it's really not everything bad, bad, bad. It's just, you know, doing things in a very different way and trying to find efficiencies and trying to provide better care for citizens. So, as you said, unless you're educated and you got all the information, and it's difficult to, you know, kind of get your head around the impact and the potential impacts on our community. So we look forward to that in the new year. Any other discussion or comment? Deputy Mayor Brown?
Some comments on the Special Olympics Winter Games happening there in March. In March month, some 350 athletes, parents, coaches will come to Grand Falls, Windsor, a super event. All the facilities booked, all our hotel rooms are booked, so tourism economics spin-off from that as well. But the call will be going out to the people of Grand Falls, Windsor in January to help volunteer, obviously with 350 athletes. And various sporting events, we'll need a lot of people to make that happen. So we look forward to a positive response from the community when the call goes out in early January. Grand Falls, Windsor, of course, a very inclusive committee, and we're only too happy to have the Special Olympians come back. They were here in 2019. And in fact, they're back again both well for the organizing committee and the town itself. So we look forward to that, Mr. Mayor, for sure.
Yeah, for sure. We had the opportunity to visit the Special Olympians at their Christmas dinner and dance there a little while ago, as you know. And it's good to see them being able to get back into that. We look forward to it. I know the last time we had the games here in 19, we had a lot of volunteers. So hopefully, we'll see the same response this time. And it's 350 athletes. You're going to have, you know, their athlete village venue, and they'll have transportation, and you'll have refereeing, judging, you know, just general logistics and that, that they're going to need. So we look forward to it. Hopefully, the weather cooperates, and we get some good wintery weather in March, and we'll have what is the best sporting event around, in my opinion, and I mean of any sporting events. Any other comments on the Community Services minutes? Hearing none. We got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Okay, Public Works and Development. Councillor Cody, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works and Development met on Wednesday, December 7th, at 5:00 PM. In attendance, myself as the chairperson, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Councillor Bob Hiscock, Mayor Barry Manuel via telephone, Councillor Holly Dwyer, Councillor Andrew Little, Councillor Dave Noel, Darren Finn, Chief Administrative Officer, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Town Clerk, Robin Haniford, Communications Officer, and Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development. Capital. The committee reviewed the proposed Schedule A change for the multi-year capital works 2023 agreement to allocate the remaining funds. The changes include additional funding for the new salt shed and town hall HVAC upgrades, with remaining funds moved to a new project in Circular Road area for manholes cleanouts to facilitate sewer relining in 2023. There is no request for new funding with these changes, as all funding is within the current agreement. The committee recommends that these changes be approved and a resolution be prepared for the next council, public council meeting. Public Works Report. The committee reviewed the latest report from Public Works on the compliance of residents with respect to garbage regulations. Compliance rate at the end of the summer was about 86%, which had 800 violations per week. From efforts of staff and a good communication campaign, the compliance rate has increased to 99%. The committee is pleased with this progress, and thanks staff and residents for their cooperation. This has helped keep, helped clean up our streets. Crown Land Referral, 13 Circular Road. The committee reviewed a Crown Land referral regarding the property at 13 Circular Road. This parcel of land was once a grant, and the residence has been there for several decades. The application is looking to get clear title for the property. The committee recommends that this be approved. The committee review, sorry, disposal of vehicles. The committee reviewed requests from municipal enforcement to dispose of three vehicles that have been impounded. One vehicle has been in the town's possession for several months due to traffic violations, and another two were seized due to a cleanup order by council earlier this year. The owners have been contacted but failed to retrieve the vehicles. The committee recommends this be approved, and staff make arrangements for disposal. The meeting adjourned at 5:50 PM, and I move the recommendations and report of the committee.
It's been moved by Councillor Cody, seconded by Councillor Little. Any discussion on the Public Works Minutes? Councillor Cody?
I'm just looking for the little. So with respect to the garbage regulations, our new garbage regulations did come into effect at the beginning of this year, and it's been a work in progress. We did get a little more strict the last couple of months on making sure that we were enforcing those new regulations. And our efforts are working. As I read in the minutes, 99% compliance now for the weekly garbage collections, which is excellent. And while we understand and appreciate the efforts of our residents, we also understand that there will be more garbage created over the holiday season. So because of that, we have decided to do a free holiday drop-off, and that will be at Shannadiddit Centennial Park. The dates will be December the 27th from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, December the 28th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and January the 2nd from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So we'll still only be accepting household garbage and recyclables. There'll be no hazardous materials or anything like that that would be collected during this drop-off time. We will have staff there to help you sort your garbage and your recyclables, or to get it into the bins. We'll still also be doing our regular garbage collection, with the exception of a couple of dates where garbage collection has changed due to holidays. But I would again remind residents to please follow our social media sites, because all of this information is posted on our Facebook site and our Twitter page. So again, and we'll post that regularly leading up to the date and that as well. But, you know, just as a thank you to our residents, we understand they're doing their best to comply. You know, they purchased the additional bin to make sure, you know, that they remain in compliance. But we do understand there will be extra garbage because of the holidays, you know, boxes, wrapping paper, food waste, you know, and all the good things that come along with celebrating in the holidays. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, they could continue to be in compliance and just offer this additional service for that period of time. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Any other comments on the Public Works Minutes? Hearing none. We got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. There is a resolution, as you mentioned in the minutes. Councillor Cody, if you would.
Thank you. Resolution GFW 2022-353. Multi-year capital works program revised Schedule A, whereas the town of Grand Falls, Windsor qualifies for funding under the provincial multi-year capital works program, whereas all projects and funding allocation under these agreements must be approved through the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, and whereas the town of Grand Falls, Windsor has available funding remaining in the multi-year capital works program and has to re-profile funding. Therefore, be it resolved that the Schedule A be revised and funding be reallocated as per revised Schedule A. And I move this resolution.
Okay, it's proposed by Councillor Cody, seconded by Councillor Hiscock. Any discussion on the resolution? No discussion? Mover and a seconder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Resolution passed. Okay, next up, we have Corporate Services Minutes. There's actually five sets of Corporate Services Minutes, and there's a reason for that. Of course, there are some activities that various councillors are connected with, and there can be a perceived conflict of interest. So what we have done is separated these items out, and we will ask each of the councillors who are affected by the given topic to leave while we deal with that minute. So we're going to have a little bit of back and forth. And I will start, I think, the first set of minutes, we should be fine.
We're ready.
Right, okay. So I'll ask you then, Councillor Dwyer, if you would, do the first set of minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The following are the minutes for Corporate Services, held 5:00 PM Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. 13th, 2022. Present were myself as chairperson, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Dave Noel, Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Councilor Bob Hiscock, and Councilor Andrew Little. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services, Robin Hannaford, our Communications Officer, and Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Town Clerk. Labor Report. The committee reviewed the labor cast as of Week 49. Total labor was $3,568,035. This was $177,359, or 4.7% under budget. The committee is pleased with the results of the labor report and encouraged management to remain fiscally responsible when deciding to complete projects that will require additional funds. Disbursement Report. The committee reviewed the disbursement report in the amount of $948,373.03 and recommends this be presented at the next council meeting. Taxation Receivables Analysis Report. The committee reviewed the taxation analysis for October 2022. The report analyzes the receivables balances, along with the amounts collected during the month. Total taxation receivable as of November 30th, 2022, was $2,544,618.07, a decrease of $280,339.58 from the previous year. Total amount of taxes collected in November 2022 was $599,074. The committee is pleased with the November results and recommends that staff remain vigilant in collecting all outstanding balances as we head towards the end of the year. Residents and businesses are encouraged to reach out to the Corporate Services Department at 489-0402, 0403, or 0404 to discuss their outstanding balance and make payment arrangements. Festival Reports. The committee reviewed the financial report for the 2022 Salmon Festival. The total investment in the festival this year was $13,098, compared to the original budget of $50,000. The committee also reviewed the reports for the Culinary and Poutine Festivals. Both events broke even for 2022. The committee is pleased with the reports and commend the Community Services Department for another successful year. The committee looks forward to starting the planning for 2023 in the coming months. Fire Hall Request. The committee reviewed a request from the volunteer firefighters regarding changes in calculation of the honorarium. The committee recommends increasing the travel part of the honorarium calculation from $360 per volunteer to $500. The committee also recommends increasing the weekend standby from $20 a day to $30 a day. These new rates will be used to calculate the honorarium for 2023. The meeting adjourned at 7:00 p.m., and I move the recommendation report of this committee.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Dewar. Seconded by Councilor Cody. Any discussion on the first set of Corporate Services Minutes? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Mayor, just a few comments on the festival reports, and congratulations to the Community Services Department for getting through the 200 events and festivals and other programs and doing it all well under budget. You had $50,000 to work with, only spent 13. And certainly, our Community Services Department, as the mayor mentions on occasion, is really good at getting grants and applying for grants and that kind of stuff, so great job there. The festivals were all great, all the events were great, and to come in under budget is the icing on the cake, I would say. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thanks for that. I just stopped my mind and remember the days of Salmon Festival when the, when the results, the financial results were coming out, and there was so much anticipation and interest. Well, we're $37,000 under budget. So that's, that's good to report, and obviously, I think it was a great festival, and everybody who took part enjoyed very much. The fire hall request pretty much speaks for itself, but, you know, like anybody these days is casting more to drive vehicles and such, and our volunteer fire department are often heading back and forth to either training grounds or the department for training meetings, obviously, fire calls. So that was an easy one to rationalize, and, you know, upping that standby fee, which would put a little more money in their pockets. As we know, our volunteer fire department do a fantastic job, and we say it over and over again, and they deserve all the accolades, as professional as they are. So we're glad to be able to do that, and once again, just hats off to our, our great fire department that we have. Any other comments on the first set of Corporate Services Minutes? Hearing none. I got a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Aye. Can't remind it. Motion carried. Okay, so the next set of minutes is going to require myself to leave, so I'm gonna ask the deputy mayor to take the gavel, and I will return upon what I'm beckoned.
Okay, well, let the record show, the mayor has left the meeting, and Councilor Dewar, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Following are the minutes for Corporate Services, held 4:30 p.m. Wednesday, December 14th, 2022. Present were myself as chairperson, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Dave Noel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our C.A.O., Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services. Budget 2023. Due to a perceived conflict of interest regarding the Corduroy Brook Enhancement Association, Mayor Manuel, who is the Executive Director of the Corduroy Brook Enhancement Association, did not attend this portion of the meeting. The committee also, sorry, the committee reviewed a grant proposed for the Corduroy Brook Enhancement Association during budget deliberations and recommends that $40,000 be approved for 2023. There is a grant proposed for the Exploits Blades, which a relative of Mayor Manuel plays for. The committee recommends that Mayor Manuel is not in conflict in this decision, as it impacts a broad group overall. This decision will be included with the overall budget 2023 approval. The meeting adjourned at 4:45 p.m. I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Thank you, Councilor Dewar. Can I give a second, please? Councilor Hiscock? Thank you. Any discussion on the minute? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion carried. I guess we can call the mayor back in.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next set of Corporate Services Minutes, which will be number three, and for this one, we're going to ask the deputy mayor to excuse us. Okay, if you would. Councilor Dewar, please.
Following are the minutes for Corporate Services, held 4:45 p.m. Wednesday, December 14th, 2022. Present were myself as chairperson, members Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Dave Noel, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, and Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services. Budget 2023. Due to a perceived interest regarding the Grand Falls Golf Club, Deputy Mayor Brown, who is also the Executive Director of the Golf, Grand Falls Golf Club, did not attend this portion of the meeting. The committee reviewed two grants proposed for the Grand Falls Golf Club during budget deliberations, one grant for $25,000, and another for junior golf for $2,000. The committee recommends these grants be approved for 2023. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 p.m., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Dewar. Seconded by Councilor Little. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Can't remind it. Okay, next up, I'm gonna ask Councilor Cody if she would excuse us for Corporate Services number four. When you're ready, Councilor Dewar, please.
Following are the minutes for Corporate Services, held 5:00 p.m. Wednesday, December 14th, 2022. Present were myself as chair, members Councilor Dave Noel, Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services slash Town Clerk. Budget 2023. There are grants proposed for the Community Gardens, Exploits Valley High Graduation, travel grants, and minor baseball, which Councilor Cody or a relative were involved with. The committee recommends that Councilor Cody is not in conflict on these decisions, as they impact the broad group of the organizations overall. These decisions will be included with the overall budget 2023 approval. The meeting adjourned at 5:15 p.m., and I move the recommendation and report of this committee.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Dewar. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Brown. Any discussion on Corporate Services four? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Can't remind it. Okay, and while Councilor Cody rejoins us, I'll ask Councilor Little if he would excuse us for the last set of Corporate Services Minutes.
Following are the minutes for Corporate Services, held 5:15 p.m. Wednesday, December 14th, 2022. Present were myself as chair, members Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Dave Noel, Mayor Barry Manuel, Deputy Mayor Mike Brown, Councilor Bob Hiscock. Staff in attendance were Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services slash Town Clerk. Budget 2023. There is a grant proposed for minor soccer, which a relative of Councilor Little is involved with. Also, Councilor Little is part of a user group who pays for ice rentals at the stadium. The committee recommends that Councilor Little is not in conflict on these decisions, as they impact the broad groups overall. These decisions will be included in the overall budget 2023 approval. The meeting adjourned at 5:30 p.m., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Dewar. Seconded by Councilor Noel. Any discussion on the final set of Corporate Services Minutes? Yes, Councilor Cody?
Just a comment. I know with the new code of conduct legislation, as we evolve in participating in, as we get ready to adopt our own new code of conduct, it was recommended, and is stated in that training, actually, that when a counselor is in a perceived conflict of interest or conflict of interest, and that vote is happening in a public meeting, then that counselor can stay in the gallery and in chambers, does not necessarily have to exit the room. So it's preference. You know, we can leave or we can stay, but I just wanted to let public know that that is a change, and we, counselors are now permitted to be in the gallery and be present during the meeting as it goes on, and that conflict vote happens.
That is correct. Thanks for that. Okay, we got a mover and a seconder. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Can't remind it. And just a comment there, I guess, to follow up on those minutes before we get into Committee at the whole, and Councilor Cody had mentioned the new legislation, and all councils across the province are expected to take training courses and to understand the legislation well, as it relates to the conflict of interests. And, you know, it's for precautionary reasons, I guess, for these issues, that we decided to separate ourselves for the smaller items particularly. I mean, when you talk about a town like Grand Falls Windsor and a council, you're gonna have people on council who have connections in the community, and the smaller the towns get, the more that happens, and there's cases where you may have, you know, no one left to vote, if you were to excuse everybody because your, you know, someone was doing something in town. And, you know, the examples are like the graduation, you know. It just so happens, Councilor Cody got a daughter who's graduating this year. Councilor Little's got his young fellow in soccer, I guess we can call him Little-Little. He'd be double L. Now Robbie is in soccer, but, you know, these things are, quite frankly, probably stretching it a bit in terms of conflicts, but we will deal with them as we need to, and continue to do so moving forward. So that's some of what you're seeing go on here in the chamber this evening, and likely we'll see quite often as, as time goes on in future meetings as well. Okay, let's move into the Committee at the Whole Minutes. We do have three sets of Committee at the Whole Minutes. So, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Brown, I'll ask you to get into number one, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Committee at the Whole met 5:00 p.m. Thursday, December 1st. Those in attendance were myself as chair, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Holly Dewar, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little, Councilor Dave Noel. Staff in attendance, Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services, Peter Windsor, Manager of Finance, and Robin Hannaford, Communications Officer. 2023 Budget Discussions. The committee reviewed and discussed budget documentation related to the 2023 budget. The committee recommends that staff revise the budget based on discussion and report back to the committee next week. The meeting adjourned at 9:00 p.m., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor. Look for a seconder. Councilor Hiscock? Any discussion on the first Committee at the Whole Minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Can't remind it. Motion carried. Okay, number two, please, when you're ready.
Committee at the Whole met 5:55 p.m. Wednesday, December 7th. Those in attendance were myself as chair, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Holly Dewar, Councilor Bob Hiscock, Councilor Andrew Little, and Councilor Dave Noel. Staff in attendance, Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services, and Robin Hannaford, Communications Officer. 2023 Budget Discussions. The committee reviewed and discussed budget documentation related to the 2023 budget. The committee recommends that staff revise the budget based on discussion and report back to the committee next week. The meeting adjourned at 9:30 p.m., and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
Case removed by Deputy Mayor Brown. Seconded by Councilor Dewar. Any discussion on the second set of Committee at the Wholes? Councilor Hiscock?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to let everybody know that the budget was very intense and laborious. I mean, you give a report that just a few, is a minute long, but the hours and hours that were put into this budget is unbelievable, and the amount of work that's been done by our finance staff, and of course, Councilor Holly Dewar, who was in charge, or head of that committee. But I mean, just let the residents know that everything was discussed intensely. Nothing was just whimsical, and just let the people know that this was, you know, it was a very, very important budget, and it was, I was very honored to be just a part of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thanks for that. That's a good comment. Okay, we are looking for a, we have a mover and a seconder, sorry, and I'm looking for any other discussion, if anybody wishes, and if not, we'll move on to the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Can't remind it. Motion carried. Deputy Mayor Brown, when you're ready, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Committee at the Whole met 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Those in attendance were myself as chair, Mayor Barry Manuel, Councilor Amy Cody, Councilor Dave Noel, Councilor Holly Dewar, Councilor Bob Hiscock, and Councilor Andrew Little. Staff in attendance included Darren Finn, our Chief Administrative Officer, Steve Goss, Director of Corporate Services, Todd Mercer, Director of Community Services, Nelson Chapman, Director of Public Works and Development, and Robin Hannaford, our Communications Officer. Grand Falls House Heritage Foundation. The committee reviewed correspondence from the Grand Falls House Heritage Foundation, whereby they are requesting incline and financial support from the town. The committee recommends that staff arrange a meeting with the Grand Falls House Heritage Foundation to discuss the requests and report back to the committee. 11 Vine Street. The committee reviewed a report about the property of 11 Vine Street. The committee recommends a cleanup order be issued for this property. Budget 2023 Community Grants. The mayor and the deputy mayor were individually excused from meetings for discussions regarding Corduroy Brook Enhancement Association and the Grand Falls Golf Club respectively. Cordial Brook Enhancement Association and the Grand Falls Golf Club respectively. The committee discussed grants provided in the past to various community organizations and groups, and the committee recommends that staff make adjustments in the budget, document, and report back at a future meeting. The meeting is adjourned at 8:50 PM, and I move the recommendations and report of this committee.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Brown, seconded by Counselor Little. Any discussion on the final set of Committee to the Whole minutes? Counselor Little.
It's, mention the minutes there about the Grand Falls House Heritage Foundation, and we've since had a meeting with that organization, and it went very well. I think it went very well. There's, there were some, I think, misunderstandings, miscommunications about, you know, the town's commitment about certain things, and I think we reassured them that we are committed to supporting them in, you know, the eventual self-sustainability of that building and whatever we need to do that. And I think the people who were attending that meeting from the foundation were very pleased with what they heard. Thank you.
Well, thanks for that. And, of course, Counselor Little sits on the Grand Falls House Foundation as a ex-official and representative of the town. So, you know, it's, it's an important project. It's just starting to finally get some legs now because we've got the ownership of the property. There's a lot of work to do, a lot of passion that's going behind, behind the scenes, lots of great ideas that will make it self-sustainable in the future, and we're going to be hoping for great things for that property and that it will, I guess, blend in with the rest of our tourism development, especially in the downtown and riverfront. So, stay tuned for more on that. Any other comments on the last set of minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Country-minded. Motion carried. Okay, moving along. Any notice of motion? No notice of motion. We'll move into the highlight of the evening. Counselor Dwyer, Budget 2023, what everybody's waiting for.
Mayor and council, as Chair of the Corporate Services Committee, it is my pleasure to present the 2023 municipal operating budget for the town of Grand Falls Windsor. Council has always been proud of our staff's ability and willingness to offer residents a high level of municipal services. They go above and beyond to provide exceptional snow clearing, garbage collection, road maintenance, and water and sewer services. Furthermore, Grand Falls Windsor is a benchmark for leisure programming and exciting events. Here, citizens of all ages and interests can access beautifully maintained parks and playgrounds and quality recreation facilities. The quality programs, interesting events, and accessible social infrastructure put our town on the map, making it a community of choice for citizens and prospective residents. Council also takes pride in its investment into community groups, supporting invaluable opportunities and experiences to our residents that significantly enhance their quality of life. All of this is achieved while maintaining a lower average taxation for residents and businesses alike when compared to similar communities in Newfoundland and Labrador. In the aftermath of COVID-19, the economy continues to face extraordinary challenges. Lasting pressures from the pandemic, along with other global and national events, including the unrest in Ukraine, have caused the cost of living for residents to increase at alarming rates. Inflation is skyrocketing, interest rates are rising, and supply chains have been tested. We, as a council, know that many of our residents are being forced to make difficult decisions regarding spending. We recognize that the citizens of Grand Falls Windsor are feeling the pressure, and we too are feeling the strain of current economic conditions. Municipal operations are not immune from inflationary pressures and interest rate increases. We, like all our residents and businesses, find that achieving our objectives costs more. Our council and management have examined the budget closely, looking for areas where savings can be realized to ensure our operations remain efficient and sustainable. The 2023 budget represents decisions that have been made to achieve those goals while striving to provide the absolute best living experience for our citizens. In November, the town engaged our citizens through a budget consultation online form that was promoted on our website and social media platforms. There were several themes noted in the responses, such as residents being pleased with the level of services offered, particularly community events, in addition to ensuring the town's taxes remain in line with comparable communities. These themes were kept in mind as council navigated through our decisions. I'd like to thank the residents that took time to provide us with such feedback, and I assure you that your voices have been heard. Engagement with the community has been a priority of council, and this will continue in 2023. Both the residential and commercial mill rates associated with property tax will remain unchanged for 2023. The majority of the town's tax revenue comes from these two categories, and council felt it was important to keep these the same for this coming year. The last residential property tax increase occurred in 2019, while the last commercial property tax increase was in 2012. 2023 will, however, see some increases for residents and businesses in Grand Falls Windsor. The water and sewer tax amount will increase from $475 to $545 for both residential and commercial properties. Upgrades to the town's water and sewer system are constantly needed, and in 2023, the town plans to upgrade the water distribution system in several locations and will evaluate the need for improvements in the water treatment plant. The increase in water and sewer tax will help offset some of these expected expenditures. Council is committed to continually improving the water and sewer services provided to citizens. Council, in the representation of the people of Grand Falls Windsor, must ensure that any recommended tax increase is necessary and purposeful. As well, council is always cognizant of how we compare to other communities who have similar water and sewer infrastructure networks, and we compare very favorably with respect to water and sewer taxes. With respect to business taxes, most in this segment of our community have not seen an increase in their mill rate in over 25 years. This is set to change in 2023, as there are several adjustments for various business tax categories, with most of the impact being on larger departments, stores, and professional offices. Making decisions about tax increases is not something that is taken lightly, and fees and rates are set after considerable debate and deliberation. Collectively, council will be implementing changes that are both fair to those in the community but necessary to allow us to offer exemplary services and meet the needs and standards of living for residents. We commit to continue making strategic investments in projects and programs within the community that will keep moving us forward. Revenues for 2023 will total $21.2 million. Eighty-eight percent of this amount will come from taxation, the same portion as in 2022. There will be increases in other revenues, which stem from a comprehensive review of fees, such as stadium and facility rentals, tax certificates, permits, and other similar services offered by the town. These items were due to be assessed as they had not been reviewed in several years. Given the current cost of providing such services, this increase is required. The 2023 schedule of rates and fees, which includes all rental fees, permit fees, and tax rates, is now available on our website at www.grampfalswindsor.com. Total expenditures for the 2023 operating budget are projected to be $21.2 million, a 5.6% increase over the 2022 budget. Given Canada's current inflation rate at 6.9%, and interest rates set by the Bank of Canada being the highest since 2008, this 5.6% increase demonstrates a willingness to reduce spending where possible. Our priority is to make this year's operating budget as lean as possible. Donations and grants are among the expenditures that support various community groups and organizations. We view these community groups as integral parts of our town, enhancing the lives of citizens. Grant allotments for 2023 include a commitment from the Grand Falls House Foundation to develop plans for the iconic property to become a central part of our town's heritage, as well as a continuing commitment to the Lionel Kellen Hospice with $25,000 to help them launch their new facility in 2023. As we invest in Grand Falls Windsor and strive to achieve our maximum potential, we are also planning to make substantial capital expenditures. In 2023, $12.5 million will be allocated for capital work, with town contributing just under $3.7 million of that amount. In this year's budget, there's a focus on investing in our water and sewer infrastructure, which will improve the quality of service we provide to our citizens. Some of the projects included in our capital program are significant investments in our water and sewer upgrades for the downtown region of Grand Falls Windsor in the bank road, circular road, and Union Street areas, amounts allocated toward the street resurfacing program, additional pedestrian crossing lights, equipment to improve the quality of the town's baseball and softball fields, and a new kayak floating dock to enhance ease of access for citizens who enjoy time in the beautiful Explies River. In addition, council continues to be heavily invested in the interests of our residents and those in surrounding communities regarding healthcare services provided at the Central Newfoundland Regional Health Center and other facilities. In 2022, I personally sat on the Grand Falls Windsor Community Healthcare Coalition Committee, which was established to ensure that the interests of Grand Falls Windsor and its residents were protected in the health accord for Newfoundland and Labrador. The healthcare system in our province faces a major challenge when it comes to attracting and retaining physicians, and this committee recently produced a report outlining recommendations for the town's consideration to address this challenge. Recommended actions include enhancing resources to promote Grand Falls Windsor to potential physicians, allocating resources to lead town initiatives for recruitment and retention of medical professionals, and continuing to support rural health initiatives related to research and training. In 2023, council will continue to focus on this issue and ensure that resources are available to fulfill the recommendations of the committee. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, council, and residents of Grand Falls Windsor, I present to you the 2023 municipal operating budget. As acknowledged, the current economic conditions have increased the cost of providing services, and this is reflected in some of the decisions we, as a council, have had to make. However, we have also taken great strides to minimize the impacts on our residents and to ensure our operations remain effective and comprehensive. We have created a budget that is fiscally responsible and ensures that we are able to achieve the service goals that the residents of Grand Falls Windsor have come to expect and deserve. I move adoption of the 2023 municipal operating budget and schedule of rates and fees.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Dwyer. Looking for a seconder to the budget?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Brown? Any discussion, comment on the 2023 budget? Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you. I would just like to thank our Chief Administrative Officer, Darren Finn, Steve Goss, our Director of Corporate Services, along with the staff and my colleagues on council, for their time and commitment. There is a great deal of work, as Counselor Hiscok alluded to earlier, that goes into where we are today with the presentation and adoption of, of this, this budget, so thank you for that. I'm also happy to announce, as we said, that we're able to keep the residential and commercial mill rate the same. It's what we consider to be a great achievement and one we should be proud of, and hopefully this will provide some measure of relief to our residents who I know have been anxiously awaiting what the municipal budget was going to speak to. And so, hopefully, because they are also feeling the pressures of inflation as we are, as a municipality. But, Grand Falls Windsor continues to provide excellent services, events, and programs as we spoke about in the budget, and while there are external environmental challenges, the future really looks bright in Grand Falls Windsor, and we're in a good position in terms of long-term sustainability, and so the future looks bright. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dwyer. Deputy Mayor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, I'll be supporting the budget this evening. Thanks, Counselor Dwyer. Lengthy document, well-read. And some of the highlights, of course, the highlights Counselor Dwyer mentioned, the new canoe kayak, canoe kayak dock for Gorge Park. We've had lots of requests from, be careful with that one. Lots of requests from citizens who love to kayak and canoe on the Explies River, so they can look forward to that dock being built, and, and it certainly will improve the Gorge Park as a whole. With respect to our community events, I said it before, and I say we do over 200 programs of community events, so we'll continue to do them extremely well, and I suspect there will be a couple of new events in 2023. I know the Community Services Department works hard in coming up with events, so we look forward to that as well, and we look forward to those events, giving the citizens of all ages and families in our community something to do, basically, if they're that way inclined. There's lots of events and programs in Grand Falls Windsor, and there's something for everybody if you took the time to go look. With respect to 2023 being a bright year, I agree, Counselor Dwyer, our employment levels are rising as a result of the mining and tech industries in Grand Falls Windsor. More people being employed and good-paying jobs as well. So, 2023 should bode well for that as well. Our school of nursing will be, I think, fully operational in 2023 at some point, so that's something that people of Grand Falls Windsor have advocated for a long time. I know Stanley Singh has been a longtime employee of the town of Grand Falls Windsor has advocated for that for decades, but to finally come into fruition in 2023. So, lots of good things in the budget. Unfortunately, we did have to have a small tax increase in the water and sewer rate, but just $70 per household, so acceptable, I think, and at this point in time. I remember being in a meeting with Mr. Chapman some weeks ago, and he noted that the fuel cost alone from 2021 to 2022 had risen by almost a half million dollars. I think it was $440,000 increase in just fuel revenues for the town, so significant expenses being incurred as a result of the world economy, we'll call it, but I think it's, I think it's a good budget, and I look forward to supporting it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments on the budget? Counselor Cody?
Just a comment on the Public Works Department. I mean, with the combination of a lot of the parks and recreation work coming into the Public Works Department, obviously, that department's budget has grown significantly, but we still managed to do some great work with the amount of money that we do have in that department. You know, as Counselor Hiscok said, this was a lengthy process, a lot of long hours, a lot of discussion, a lot of data, you know, weighing the pros and cons of what have, if you do this, how does it affect something else, and, you know, you try to balance it the best you can. You know, I agree with the Deputy Mayor. While we didn't want to see any increases, you know, it just wasn't feasible for us to be able to do that. We felt that the, the increase in the water and sewer taxation would be the best option to give us some additional revenue without putting an additional strain on property tax for our residents. And in realigning our business tax categories, we were able to gain revenue on the companies who can afford to pay it the most, while keeping in mind, you know, that, you know, we have a lot of small businesses in here, you know, who suffered during COVID and who found new ways to do business and how to engage with public, and have really started to develop an online presence, which has, you know, really bumped them up and given them some new ways of doing business as well. So, you know, we, we want to protect them, and we want to make sure that they are, continue to be successful. We know that the larger chains will always be successful, so that's where we focused our efforts to make sure that we maximize, you know, the, the impact, I shouldn't say maximize, but that the impact is greatest on those who can afford to pay it. So, you know, it was, again, a long, tedious effort on everybody's part, but I think the results are good, and, you know, and I think that the community will benefit from, from the work that was done in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cody. Any other comments on the budget?
Okay, I got a couple of things there before we go ahead and, and vote, and in no particular order, I guess, and some of the stuff has already been said. Obviously, it's good to get through this process and be able to leave the residential mill rate where it is. And I think, you know, a lot of communities, of course, are struggling these
And I think, you know, a lot of communities, of course, are struggling these days with rising costs, and I think fuel costs, Deputy Mayor, have doubled, doubled. So, you can imagine with the town and the fleet size and the heavy equipment and, you know, when fuel is attached to other cars, such as chemicals for your water treatment facility, wastewater facility, et cetera, the costs are going up. The water rates, yeah, it's gone up a bit, and we will get some much-needed revenue from that. But if you compare our water rates with other comparable communities in the province, we're still lower than all the others. And I mean, when you look at CBS, Mount Pearl, Paradise, Gander, Corner Brook, probably a couple more, but even with the increase, we're still lower than all others. And that's true with the average taxation in Grand Falls Windsor as well. For residents in Grand Falls Windsor, average taxation paid is lower than all those communities I just made. And I know sometimes people feel that just the mill rate is a certain level, and that is the be-all, says-all, but it's not. The mill rate has to be applied to property values, and, and once that's done, then it's a clearer picture of being able to compare apples to apples. Parks and green spaces was mentioned, and our community, Community Service Department and all the great work they do, but it's worth noting that one category that the town of Grand Falls Windsor does spend a fair bit more money than all other communities that I mentioned is in parks and green spaces. We do, through the labor budget and through the different parks around town, Church Road Park was mentioned this evening, and of course, there's many others, and just trying to keep the town as nice-looking as possible. We do invest more than, a significant amount more than, than other communities. You'll see some traffic light improvements on Pincent and Cromer. No more will you have to stop at a red light there if there's no traffic in sight, and you'll be able to zoom on through when we get the motion sensors in there and, and new lights. Paving, obviously, we have to discuss more in the new year on our paving program. We're still waiting on the provincial government, as are all communities, to understand better what we're going to receive through our municipal capital works program. Our three-year agreement had just run out at the end of 2022, and we're now into 2023 without knowing what's coming. But we will have more discussion on the paving program. We always strive to try to keep that paving program up to a level where we are resurfacing our roads, and over the course of time, we're getting around to the one that's needed again. I know we can look around town and see lots of roads that could use a fresh coat of asphalt there, and there's no doubt, but it's virtually impossible to do all that needs to be done, and that's why we, we will carefully look at all the roadways, and our staff will do assessments on these, and considering the volume of traffic and everything else that plays factor into that, we would make the decisions based on that. We're also going to replace 12 to 14 light vehicles in our fleet this year through the new enterprise program, and that obviously is going to allow our employees to be traveling in newer, safer vehicles, and also the maintenance on those vehicles will come at a much better cost to the town. And the Public Works Depot and the Fire Department will be getting a much-needed facelift, and also at the town hall here, the HVAC system that controls air quality is going to have a big overhaul as well, and those are much-needed investments for sure. You know, when you go back and you look, the last residential mill rate increase was in 2019, so, you know, we've managed to get through almost four years now without that increase. I'm sure in future, it will be inevitable that, that has to increase as costs do, but I'm proud of council and, and staff and what we've been able to achieve in going through all the different areas and, you know, where we can save money and where we may not be able to. And one thing that wasn't mentioned in all the time and the tedious exercise that it is, is all the fighting and arguing that we do. There's lots of that, and rightly so, because these are important decisions that we need to make, and, and everybody's opinion, and not everybody always sees things the same way, and that's healthy. But I'm glad that this council is able to review all those decisions and, and move on to the next one without any kind of personal feelings, and sometimes that's difficult. And I've seen in the past, maybe not necessarily our council, but other councils, who have had some struggles with that, so it's good to be able to respect each other and have those differing views heard. Other than that, you know, really not much else to say. I think to continue to do all the things we are striving to do, make Grand Falls Windsor very best it can be, not only for our current residents, but also in attracting future residents as well. We have mining, which is taking off here in central Newfoundland. We have the new announcement now on wind energy, which is very interesting, and there's a number of hectares of land in central Newfoundland that's been nominated, and we expect someone, I'm sure, will have a proposal on some wind energy projects here in central Newfoundland as well. And, you know, bodes well for the future. It really does. These are things that have to happen worldwide because of the global, you know, trying to reduce your carbon emissions and all the agreements that the, the G7, G20 groups are having amongst themselves to, to make those changes. And Newfoundland-Labrador is an ideal, if not the best, place in the world for the creation and effect of the wind energy. Yeah, I'm looking for a word, but anyhow, we know what we're talking about. Yeah, it's the best place in the world for that, and that's not going to change, and that's not going to change. So, you know, lots of good things, and I think that as our community continues to grow, we'll see those industries come into play, and there's no doubt in the decades to come we're going to see a different Newfoundland-Labrador, and there's a good chance that, that people maybe from other places will be immigrating to Newfoundland-Labrador for work. And believe me when I say it, I really think that's a true fact in five, 10, 15 years from now. So, we look forward to it. Anyways, I obviously are going to support the budget, and I'll ask if the other councillors wanted to have a word before I move on to the vote. If not, that's fine. I think there's a lot been said already, and everybody has equally put their heart and soul and their sweat into this, into this document. Okay? All right. With that, then, we'll vote. We have a mover and a secondere. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried. All right, we will move into other business, and I'm not sure who's, oh, hold on, I think I've been recording that stuff here. I think councillor Hiscock is first tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a great budget, without a doubt. Very pleased with that. Also, this has been, last week was a bit of a sad time for the residents of Grand Falls Windsor. We lost a number of citizens. One, Mrs. Chatfield Galton, I think she was our oldest citizen, at 102. Sweet lady, I was her neighbor for 13 years, just an absolutely beautiful woman. Also, Mr. Don Knight, longtime employee of our town, started with the town of Windsor and that amalgamation, of course, he became a worker with Public Works for a number of years before his retirement. Also, Wilf Maloney, longtime employee of our town as well. We lost Wilf. And very prominent businessman, Mr. Terry Gojer, who we lost. And on behalf of you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and my fellow councillors, we send our condolences to all those families who were affected by the loss of their loved ones. Also, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to yourself, Deputy Mayor, my fellow councillors, and all of our staff, and across the residents of Grand Falls Windsor. And also, I'd like to wish them a Merry Christmas, and a big thank you for enabling me and giving me the opportunity to represent you once again for another year on council. Also, Mr. Mayor, let us all take time to think about our men and women in uniform. Excuse me. Unfortunately, can't be home for Christmas, so does one. But let's keep in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hiscock. Councillor Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to say for me tonight. Our community, Community Services Department is still doing stuff over holidays, so we had our Community Families' Gala, featuring Santa Claus himself on the 24th, 9 to 11 a.m. Santa Claus will be there, so everyone's welcome, regardless of status on the, now on your nice list. The, they're offering chocolate and popcorn, right? That's, that's, that's for free, right? So, that's all provided for anyone who wants to come out. It's normally a good event. I'll be there with my son, dragging him around on the ice on shore. Besides that, just have a safe and happy holiday season. Obviously, drinking and driving, a lot of people are doing some, you know, taking in the holiday festivities, they might be doing a little bit of drinking. We don't want anyone drinking and driving. There's taxis available in our town and other ways to get places, or sleep on your friend's couch, whatever you got to do to stay off the road when you're drinking. And that's, that's everything for me.
Yep. Thank you, councillor Little. Councillor Dwyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge Marathon Gold. They made a, a big contribution to our community food bank this past week, over $30,000, I believe, and I'm sure that'll go a long way in, in helping families in need this Christmas. I'd just like to wish, on behalf of myself and my family, everyone a very Merry Christmas, and be safe and be kind. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Dwyer. Deputy Mayor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick notes. Santa Claus parade, I'd like to thank the committee, Wendy Healy, Steve Healy, and Des Heinz for a fantastic job. It was a great Santa Claus parade. The fact that we moved it back to the daytime was well-accepted and approved by the residents from what, everything I heard, so, great job, and a great job by the community to come and support the parade as well, and put in their business floats, and not-for-profit groups putting in floats and that. Always great to see. And certainly Rogers TV did a fantastic job bringing the parade to the people of Grand Falls Windsor and central Newfoundland and all over the island, actually. Later in the week, their broadcast goes all on wide, so fantastic job. And for councillor Hiscock and councillor Dwyer, who the, we'll call it the play-by-play on the parade, great job yourself. And just to reiterate, councillor Hiscock, it is a tough time for families of people in uniform to be overseas. I mean, the world is not a stable place by any stretch. It's not a good time, so we understand that, we understand councillor Hiscock for sure. The Church Road Park, the Church Road Park light-up, just a tremendous, tremendous effort on behalf of the Community Services Department, yourself and Ms. McIntosh, Mr. Mercer, and your employees over there, put your heart and soul into that, and approve us in the pudding. That's the best Church Road Park light-up we've had since we started doing that, and I know we spent a lot of money on lights, didn't we, Mr. CEO? Noted at our last meeting, but well worth it, as we agreed, and for sure. And I'd like to take the opportunity to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, my fellow councillors and the mayor, and our senior staff here, Steve Goss. I know you're looking forward to getting a break from them budget meetings, but fantastic job on the way in keeping all that together and preparing our, our daily and weekly statements for us to go by. Mr. Chapman runs the business department in the town of Grand Falls Windsor, I would say, for sure, but Merry Christmas to you guys as well. There's no doubt in my mind that people in Grand Falls Windsor, Windsor realize there's people that are not so well-off, and in particular at this time of the year. So, we know the community groups, neighbors, and just good people are looking out to those people, and if you know somebody in your neighborhood that might be struggling, do not hesitate to reach out and give a hand, whether it's some food donation, or gift cards, or whatever you think. But to everyone in Grand Falls Windsor, Merry Christmas. Have a safe Christmas, and we hope that you get to celebrate all the joys of Christmas. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brown. Councillor Cody?
Just to piggyback on what Deputy Mayor was saying, the food banks, Salvation Army are continuing, and churches are continuing to collect donations up to December the 24th, so if you have an opportunity and are able, please remember those less fortunate and make a donation. The need is a lot greater than we realize, actually. And, you know, as much as we hear about it, there's so much more that we don't hear about. And it's a lot about pride. People, you know, don't want to ask for help, but, you know, sometimes you get wind of something through the community, or, you know, someone passes a note to you to let you know that, you know, this individual may be struggling, you know, please, if you can, donate. And also, just a reminder, this is also, tends to be a difficult time leading up to the holidays and after the holidays for mental health issues as well, so just, you know, always be aware. Councillor Dwyer, you know, said, be kind, and I think, you know, that's, that's the best advice that we can offer. Be kind, take care of your neighbor, and of course, take care of yourselves as well. To the teachers, we have two here, and Holly's an instructor at the college. All the students, the students home from university, we want to wish them all the best on a well-deserved break. I know they're looking forward to it, and I know they're looking forward to going back to school healthier, because it's been, the fall has certainly been a challenge with regards to absences and illnesses, so hopefully, everybody will get a nice deserved break over the holidays and, and take some time to get healthy and, and back to school. I wanted to say Merry Christmas to, to council, to all of our staff, you know, from our, all of our departments, Economic Development, Corporate Services, Community Services, Public Works and Development, all our administration staff, our management, our directors. It's been another great year, and I look forward to continuing some excellent working relationships in 2023. Huge thank you to Rogers. You've been with us for another full year, bringing our council meetings to the public, and not just our council meetings, being here for our community events, broadcasting our parade, our tree lighting, all of the special events that we do in the community. When we do, you know, special programs and things, interviews, mental health initiatives, health initiatives, different things that we're doing here in the community that council is promoting are always there to support us, and we appreciate it. And I just want you to know, it doesn't go unnoticed. So, to all the volunteers at Rogers, all the staff, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, and we will see you again in the new year. And to the residents, thank you again, from my children, Isaac, Faith, and Teresa, and myself, Merry Christmas, and I wish you all the best in health, happiness, and prosperity in 2023. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cody. Councillor Noel?
Thank you, Mayor. Few words for me this evening, other than everything's pretty well been iterated, but I want to take a minute just to say thank you to the Public Works Depot and Director Nelson. You made a little quick call today, and remedies were fixed rather promptly. I had a number of people call on their way down to school today. There was a few potholes magically appeared, as potholes do this time of year between the freeze and thaw, and, and I won't say a few, there were numerous potholes, and they're all promptly repaired. And to that effect, I just want to remind people about this time of year, I mean, yeah, we do have great roads, and snow clearing is fabulous, second to none on the island thanks to all our crew. They're not raceways, and especially this time of year, just take a minute, slow down. Don't be in that big rush that many of us find ourselves to be needlessly this time of year. Just slow down and think about others. If you're out at night, put on reflective apparel. We still have lots of people who like to walk, but I know they think that they're invincible, and we wouldn't want any tragedy to occur in our streets any time of year, more importantly, you know, just around the Christmas time. Just want to take a second again to thank everybody that's involved in the budget. You know, last it was our first time around, but it was kind of new, and we were kind of whitewashed through the whole event, but having to sat down through hours and hours and hours, I mean, you know, people know me, I'm not afraid of a day's work, but to say that the budget is a small, small item, I mean, it's not, it's immense. And I just want, you know, the public to fully appreciate the fact that, you know, you have so many people here that they're, you know, so dedicated to make this town function effectively, financially, and, you know, you, you talk to others who've moved in here, and they say, my God, so much happening here in Grand Falls Windsor, we didn't have this where we came from. And it just speaks well to the dedication to all those that are involved here in our town, senior staff, et cetera, right down through, I mean, we're all in this together, I keep telling everybody. So, I want to wish those that took the time to make this year such a success, all the best for the holiday, and look forward to doing the same thing again in 2023. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Noel. Okay, well, that leaves me. I do have a few things to say that I guess haven't been said. I know councillor Hiscock acknowledged some of the passings that we had recently, and I know councillor Hiscock acknowledged some of the passings that we had recently and I don't know if there's more attention drawn to it this time of year or if it's just this time of year, tends to increase the number of of passings. And you mentioned a number of people who who had passed and I won't repeat those, but there's one other that I wanted to add to the list and that's Albert Evans. And you know Albert as well, I'm sure. And Albert was a businessman in the community for many, many, many years and also a very good volunteer. He was involved in a lot of different things, a very giving spirit. And I know him well, certainly from Cordar Brook. And he was a daily volunteer at that project and wasn't afraid to get out and get his hands dirty and do work on the trail, whatever, whatever it took. So sadly, he was hit with that dementia, Alzheimer's disease that is so terrible. And he had passed just this past week. So to his partner Barb Budgele and all his family, he wanted to pass out condolences as well. You know, this time of year, the, I guess is my favorite time of year for the town. We have the budget, but that's not what I'm talking about. It's, you know, all the other things that we do through our, you know, we talk about our events and our programs and that kind of stuff, but there's also other initiatives that are kind of unique that we have started in the last number of years and continue to do. And I talk about particularly our give back days. So we have our give back days again this year where we select different groups or individuals around town and we'll surprise them with maybe some coffee and donuts or it could be a little gift or whatever the case may be. And this year I took part in a visit to the emerge department at our local hospital and everybody knows what those workers have been going through in the last, in in 2022 and and previous to that. So we ended up there with 51 small gifts and we got a snap taken with staff and they were very appreciative that we did that. And we have other give back days as well and other gestures. And the other thing that we have is our random acts of kindness and we talk about the kindness and this time of year is being important. But that got to be my favorite thing is the random acts of kindness. And I know unfortunately, some council weren't able to take part this year because of their work schedules and other things. But to be able to go out on a day and we had, I think there's a thousand or plus prizes and giveaways that we had that were donated, by the way, by all the generous businesses and others around town. But we drive around and give out gift certificates to people who are walking up the street. We went into a member of the Dollar Store one time a few years ago and gave away a flat screen TV to a lady who didn't have a TV. And that went over very well and I know councillor Dwyer and I went around and visited some people who were deserving this week, volunteers, some people who unfortunately are battling cancer and other illnesses. And, you know, we randomly gave some things away as well. I know councillor Dwyer had a story that when I couldn't carry on after a few hours, she had seen a couple up by the overpass who were walking and anyway, I won't get you to tell the story, we'll save it for another time, but at the end of the day, they are on their way to Dominion, so councillor Dwyer ended up giving them a ride and went and got a $50 Dominion gift card for them to go towards their groceries, because they were saying they had a freezer that had been given to them and they didn't have anything to to put in it. So it is another reminder of, you know, the people around who who do have it tough and if you can give, give and it means a lot. And there's no doubt that that is better than receiving. And I could go on and on about things. We gave one lady a garbage bin, by the way. She had a garbage bin that she had trouble with and the lid had gone and everything. So and it was an old raggedy thing and so she was so happy. She broke down in tears over a new garbage, the garbage bins, so it was fun. And we had a Christmas countdown contest as well on Facebook, all kinds of prizes and people take part in that. I had some meetings with the mayor as well. It'll be the first of many, so we'll get back to that in January again and and have invites for people to come out. Of course, you know, I'm open for meetings anytime, but to have these organized meetings and I had a great meeting with three siblings from a family who live near Lind Avenue Playground and they wanted to discuss very passionately the things that may need some fixing there and the things that would help to have some additions. And it was, it was, it was good, because it's good to get them involved early on in in their lives as well. You know, just before I conclude, I guess just to go back to councillor Hiscock's comments on his, on the people, the men and women in uniform. And I know his family members, his son is involved and he's got other family members as well directing and down the line that have served or are serving. And when you look at the world today and look around at what is going on, whether it be the, what I call the craziness in in the United States with stuff and then the Ukraine war and stuff in the Middle East and South America and, you know, all around the world, it just makes, I think it makes everybody realize how lucky we are to live where we do, here in Grand Falls Windsor, Newfoundland and Labrador. And so everybody who's serving abroad and and does that because, you know, we know it's because of the people who came before us and did stand up and volunteer and fight for our country that we have the privileges that we enjoy today. So thanks councillor Hiscock for bringing that up and I just wanted to add on to that. And finally, I don't think I'm missing anything. It's been a fairly long night, I guess, with the budget, but I also like to thank Rogers for everything that they do and stick with us at all times. We have a couple of volunteers who have joined us this year for the last few meetings and they're exchange students from Germany. So you guys able to come up and we're going to say hello to the camera? Want to say no, cut, cut. You want to stay behind the camera for sure? Are you going to come up? Okay, come up. I just wanted to introduce a couple of our international exchange students who are here at Exploits Valley High and have been enjoying very much coming down to our council meetings. And why don't you tell everybody how, what your name is and how you're enjoying it here?
I'm Marlo and I'm loving it here.
Loving it. Marlo, yeah?
I'm Rika and so do I.
Rika loves it as well, yeah. So I'm just going to ask you, if you would, in German, to say happy holidays to everyone.
Großer Weihnachten, Familie.
I won't try to replay, I think it was excellent. That was perfect. Anyway, thanks, guys. I said last I was going to get you to come up, so I hope you weren't surprised here tonight and I know you're enjoying your time here and we hope to see you here some more volunteering. Great job. Thank you. And lastly, I guess I just want to say a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays to all my colleagues on council and staff and all our friends in the community and I hope you all have a very good Christmas and get a chance to do what matters most to you, whatever that may be. And in light of some of the things that were said tonight and and different things that are going on, to really sit back and take an opportunity to enjoy at this time of year. And that's what it's, that's what it's for. So I'll end with that. One more item to do and that's to call for a motion to adjourn. Moved by deputy mayor. Seconded by councillor Cody. All those in favor? Aye. Counterpoint minded? We'll see you in 2023.